So we'll call the meeting to order at 5:05. I print the agenda. The first thing is citizens' comments. So any citizen, and by citizen, we use a wide definition of citizen. That's kind of like global citizen. It doesn't necessarily mean resident. Any citizen that wishes to speak before the committee shall identify him or herself by name and address. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes, which I will have timed on my, what do you ever call this thing? Cell phone here to present their material. After citizens' comments, the chat feature will be turned off. If members want to be recognized, they can use the raise hand feature, which if you press participant, it'll be in the lower part of the screen there for you. The total comment time will be limited to 20 minutes just to allow us to be able to get through our business because this is a meeting of the committee held in public, but it's not a meeting of the public. So if you would like to speak, you can raise your hand. There's one person whose hand is raised. Deb Clapp, we would recognize to speak.
Okay, and Deb, you've been unmuted, so you should be able to speak right now.
I'm not even sure if I'm in this meeting or not.
You are, Peter.
You are, Peter.
Yeah, but I'm just, I don't know if it's something I'm doing wrong or what, but every day, every week, it's the same thing, and I'm getting a little bit aggravated.
I wish they came to us at calendar invites instead of as these like random emails, dates, weeks in advance, and it's hard.
And they get buried if someone replies to it. It gets buried in four emails deep, so I don't know. Sorry.
What I can do is ask Janelle to set them up as calendar invites. That might be a little bit easier.
It would be helpful.
Sorry to interrupt Ms. Clapp. I just didn't even know if I was in the meeting or not.
So you have to click.
Yeah, Deb Clapp, you should be all set if you just unmute. There you go. Perfect.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Well, first of all, thank you for taking the time to hear some of my concerns. As you know, I did email several of you several times based on last week's vote that you had to take. And I know it's a very difficult thing that you guys have to do, and there's no one real right answer. But I guess the teachers, we started our day back at Hamilton Wenham this morning, and many of us were still kind of perplexed that remote, you know, it really needs to be the plan for opening. I think it's just the safest way to go. And I just wanted to highlight a few things that I have not yet said in any of my letters to you. But I think that parents need to realize just how different school is going to be when we start talking about what classrooms are going to be looking like, when we talk about what the curriculum is going to be like. It's not business as usual. They have to understand that. The pictures are, quite frankly, I guess depressing, you know, with lunch, 80 lunch tables, you know, everybody's sitting by themselves. They can't really talk to each other. They're just going to be eating and then moving on to the next thing. And the other thing is that they have to also realize that teachers are only going to see students one time per week for about 90 minutes. And that 90 minutes is not 90 minutes because we have to build in breaks to get to and from outdoor tent spaces for classrooms. We have to let them have mass breaks. Some of them will need to go to the bathroom. Some of them will get to have water issues. And so that's also a concern of mine. If we were to go full remote, I could meet with my students four times a week, not just once a week, and I could give them much more better education, in my opinion. The other thing to realize is that for a quarter, that means we only see students nine times. I'm just going to let that pause. Nine times per quarter. That's all we will see these kids. And then the rest of it is supposed to be remote. I just think that, you know, with the teachers, when we got together today and discussed this, I just think that we can do so much better of a job if we were doing, you know, Zooming with kids and actually having classes just from home. But I can see the kids four times a day, almost 220 minutes per week, not just less than 80 minutes per week. So that's the other concern of mine. I also think that students that are choosing the full remote due to any kind of health issues that they may have, they're going to feel more isolated now more than ever. There doesn't appear to be any plan for any synchronous meetings with teachers for these students. So that, again, is substantially less than anyone else in this situation as far as their education goes. I also think that some of the high-risk teachers, they're trying to work with the district in order to continue teaching. They're trying to do their jobs, but they need to do it safely. And so accommodations don't appear to be being met. And I think that that's just really sad if you're going to be forcing teachers to take a leave. If you look at school spring today, as of this morning, there were over 178 teaching jobs just in science, just in high schools. If you go to school spring and search Hamilton Wenham, you can see that the leaves are starting to pile up. Good teachers are going to be leaving. Good teachers will not be there to teach students. And that, most of all, just, it hurts me. It crushes me because kids are going to miss out on some extraordinary teaching. I don't know where these subs are going to come from, but they're not going to have the qualifications that my colleagues have today. So I'm just imploring you to please, please, please do the right thing. Allow a remote start with a rollout to hybrid after a month. Many schools are doing this. We can see as college kids start to return and vacationers return to Massachusetts, how the numbers go. And the other thing is, remote doesn't mean forever. It just means remote until it is safe to return in person. So that, I just needed to get that off my chest. I appreciate the committee listening to me, and I will give up the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there was another hand, but it was by like a non-person. It was someone who didn't have their name, and now that's gone. Another minute if there's somebody out there who would like to speak. And then Mary Beth, if you, okay, so there is someone. So Josh Sidloski, Sidloski, oh, who I know this person. I think this is actually not that name, but the person will recognize, will recognize them, and that person will say their name. I think it's somebody using like a spouse's computer.
No worries. I'll click on.
Okay.
Michelle, I think that the speaker can't see you holding up the timer. I'm not sure about that, but I think they can't.
Okay, thank you. And I, so let's ask.
Hi.
Hi, I thought that, I thought that was you. Okay, so we're going to ask you a quick question.
Yeah.
And this is not your real time, but can you see this timer?
I can when you hold it up.
Okay, perfect. Great. So we'll start your time back at the beginning.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Actually, Michelle, she could have seen it because you were speaking while you're holding it, and it recognizes your voice. When you do it in silence, she might not see it.
That's true.
So.
Then I will speak over here if you roll over.
Okay.
It's Tracy, right?
Marcy.
Marcy, sorry. Okay, so if you can say your name, and then the previous speaker did not state her address, but if you're a teacher, you can, your address can be the school that you teach at.
Sure.
And you can have your three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Marcy Sidloski. I am a teacher at Miles River Middle School, employed by the district since fall 2012, and it is the joy of my life to serve this community. I'd like to begin by discussing the difference between intentions and actions. Albert Camus wrote the quote, "Good intentions may do as much harm as malevolence if they lack understanding." Superintendent Baneos has warmly reminded us over the past few weeks to assume good intentions. That's a maxim I myself try to live by every day in my work with students and families, and she's absolutely right. It's a good policy to live by. However, part of living in a functioning society is that we are ultimately adjudicated by our actions, no matter how much we hope to be seen for our intent. Right now, the school committee is voted by a narrow margin for the hybrid reopening. It's not what I would have deemed the safest course of action, but I love my job. I love being with those kids, so I was prepared to work with my district and put my trust that our school leaders would provide the same flexibility, safety metrics, and opportunities for staff that they have for our students. Surely, those among us in the highest-risk populations would be offered for security, secure their safety as other districts are doing. Surely, reasonable workplaces accommodations would be provided for those with pre-existing conditions or plexiglass barriers for those of us who have to work one-on-one with highest-need students. Surely, teachers would be allowed to work remotely on Wednesdays while the buildings are being closed for deep cleaning to both reduce exposure risk and allow flexibility for teachers whose young children are likewise at home on those days. Surely, after years of service to this community, our district would treat us with the same respect for our safety that we have set as the benchmark for our students' return to school. As it stands, teachers and students alike are being muted during online discussions and pertaining to our reopening plan. We are literally the two groups most prepared to discuss the actual functioning logistics of a school day. I cannot tell you the powerlessness that settles upon you when you are not allowed to weigh in on critical decisions that directly impact your individual health and safety. We have teachers in this district who are being asked to literally risk their lives, and that's not hyperbole. A significant percentage of our staff are ourselves, members of our highest-risk populations. We're being told to either take unpaid leave during an economic crisis or come to work with no middle ground being offered. And I'm not talking about the average teacher who is rightly nervous about a return. I'm talking about staff members who are immunosuppressed, actively battling cancer, or living with severe diabetes and have doctors telling them in no uncertain terms, "You are not to be in that building." As it stands, staff are being asked to return to the building for professional development and co-planning that can be easily done remotely at no cost to the district despite the fact that the building upgrades remain unfinished. Either these parameters matter or they don't. So that begs the question, does our safety matter? I am trying really, really hard to assume best intentions, but at the moment, I can't help but feel that our actions and service to our students and teachers have failed thus far to come through. Please, do everything in your power to make sure that our actions validate our intentions by voting immediately to keep the buildings closed to everyone until all safety measures are established, ensuring that real accommodations are made for at-risk staff in the spirit of a two-way trust, compromise, and collaboration, and by not requiring any staff to be on-site for work that can be easily done remotely. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks. We'll recognize Allison.
Allison, you should be all set to speak.
Hi there. It's Allison Spees, 14 Farrington Lane, South Hamilton. Hi, everyone. And to the teachers out there listening, I just want to say this to you in front of the school committee that there are parents here that are in full support of you and we hear you. And I'm sorry that the district has decided to go in this direction. I mean, you're our most valuable members in this school district. You teach our kids. We should be putting your health and safety first and our students. So I just wanted to say that there are parents out there that fully support you, and I hope that a different decision is made, one that will enable you all to stay safe and for our kids to stay safe and for you to provide the type of learning that actually will be consistent and robust for what we all need at this time. And I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. It's good for the teachers to know that parents are supporting them. All right, and there is a Jay Merritt, which I feel like I know who that is also. But it would be helpful if you do want to speak at these meetings, if you put your name in there versus,
Hi.
Hi.
This is, hi, this is Jessica Merritt. I am, I've been a school counselor at Miles River Middle School for the past 10 years now. So let me start by saying I love my job and I adore the students I've worked with over the past 10 years. I miss my job and I miss my students, but I do have some serious concerns with how the district has handled preparations for the upcoming school year. Not only has there been a lack of preparation to ensure the health and safety of our staff, but the district has made it extremely difficult for our teachers and office personnel to voice our concerns. At present, the only options being presented to those of us with pre-existing conditions is an unpaid leave of absence, forcing us to choose between our work or our families. I am currently seven months pregnant, and I also have a three-year-old at home. I work in a small internal office with no one knows where six feet of distance is physically impossible. Despite my requests for PPE, I have yet to be informed whether I will qualify for any accommodations despite the CDC's insistence that pregnant women and their unborn children are at higher risk for complications from COVID-19. I am extremely worried about putting myself at a higher risk for contracting COVID, especially during my third trimester of pregnancy. In addition, the only other middle school counselor in the building is similarly being forced to choose between work and family. Because we are not starting remote, the middle school may be without the experienced, familiar counselors that our students, staff, and community have come to rely on in this most difficult moment of transition. With these and countless other issues in mind, I insist that you please reconsider your decision and allow us to start remotely in order for the buildings to be ready and to give everyone more time to prepare in the interest and safety of all. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
It's very difficult right now. Okay, that was all of the hands that were up. Okay, so what is, um, we'll recognize Beth Blanchard.
Beth, you should be all set to unmute.
Thank you. Hi.
Say your name and address or school that you hold up.
Okay, Beth Blanchard. I worked at Buiker School, retired from there two years ago. I continue to participate with the Mass Teachers Association as a retiree, and I've been keeping up with districts and fellow teachers and how things are going. I was at the school committee meeting. I noticed the close vote. I noticed the heartfelt decisions and the difficulties of those decisions as people voted. But when I have now looked at all the schools across the state and seen how they're choosing to open, I've noticed that there's a number of districts, many nearby, which are opening full remote. And when you look at the comments, they are saying full remote for now and checking back in a month, or checking back or giving a later date, like October 1st, seeing if things are good and ready to go, or November. And I noticed that there were some ideas like that on the school committee last meeting, where having a plan for checking back until the buildings are fully safe and prepared and ready with cleaning, clean air available, opportunities for knowing the procedures, having coordinated things. And I don't think teachers or students should be in those buildings yet, but that is a goal. And there's no need to rush. If there's a delay, you have that built in. I also am distressed to hear that teachers are not having the opportunity to voice their concerns and to have conversations with respect for their needs as well. And I thought there were remote academies that were going to perhaps be an option. I don't know what your numbers were when parents stated their interest. But I think it's really important that we have that active discussion and meeting of minds as well respectfully. And if it's not ready to go, it will be ready to go with taking time. And that seems to be the goal, to be safe, to be on the same page, to understand procedures and protocols, to not be in buildings during deep cleanings on Wednesday when planning can get done remotely. And then also supporting the remote learning so that it indeed is a new opportunity for families and their students and an improvement over last spring's panic. So I encourage you to think about that prior vote, to think about starting remotely again. It's not too late to make that decision. And yet, set some metrics and some timeframes for checking in about when it's time to go back. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have more information on some of those things later in our meeting. So the last person we'll recognize tonight is Jacqueline Johnson.
Jacqueline, you should be all set to unmute.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Johnson. I'm an elementary art teacher at Winthrop and Buiker. I tell my students on a regular basis that I love them and that they are all my 400 kids because I did not get to have kids in this lifetime. But the truth is, I'm not excited about coming back into school because last year, my husband had a lump under his arm, which then turned into an enlarged heart, and now he needs to go for MRIs. And I know that COVID affects the lungs and the heart. And if I pass on COVID to my husband, I will never be able to forgive myself. And if you knew me personally, I have recently survived two horrific deaths, both my mother and my husband's mother. Both deaths were very long, and both were skeletons by the time they died. I'm so afraid that that might happen to my husband. So I have a lot of anxiety about returning back to school right now, as do a lot of other teachers. Thank you for listening to me, and I really love my students, and I can't wait for school to get back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're very sorry for your losses.
Thank you.
I wish your husband well and recovery.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we've finished the, like, pre-open session. So then, we're going to go into executive session because the teacher started today, and there's new working conditions, and we just need to talk a little bit about some changes that might be happening to that, that is, that's called our memorandum of understanding or a memorandum of agreement. And then we will be back. That will not last more than 30 minutes, I promise you. We will be back in less than 30 minutes, but it may be less than that. So just be prepared. Um, so, let's see. This one is the one I, I think this is the one that I have to do. So I move that we adjourn into executive session for purpose number two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiation. Oh, we have the wrong number here. It should be three. Sorry about that. So we're, it's to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with the collective bargaining unit and to reconvene in open session. And the bargaining unit is the Hamilton Wenham Education Association. I'm sorry, Dana, did you second it? Fantastic. Okay, so we will do a roll call vote since all members are participating remotely. David will need to be unmuted because I'm not sure if he can do that himself on his phone.
No.
I can do it.
Great. Perfect. David?
Yes.
Thank you. Dana?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And Michelle Bailey? Yes. Okay, so we'll be back less than 30 minutes, or exactly 30 minutes. We are back. The first thing we are going to do is review some COVID-related policies. I think we'll go ahead and vote to approve them, which is going to require that we vote to set aside the procedure of having a first reading and a second reading, and then we would vote to approve these. So does policy want to talk about them real quick? And do we want to display them, or what do you guys want to do?
I can talk about them. Does, has everyone had a chance to read them?
Well, you put up the face mask one first? Absolutely. Face covering. Face cover.
Michelle Horgan and Peter, is it okay if I talk through what we did and why we did it and where we are?
Absolutely.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, please, if I say something that sounds wrong to you, just jump right on in. Okay, so the policies that we're looking at, they came to us from the NASC. So these are not documents that Policy Subcommittee generated itself. It's sort of pro forma from the NASC itself. First one is the face coverings policy. And Mary Beth, you can go back up to the top a little, sort of hover over. The key thing that we sort of talked about as a group was the fact that we're not specifying what constitutes a mask. We're simply saying it has to be a Hamilton Wenham Regional School District-approved mask. And the idea behind this is that we're establishing a policy that says, generally speaking, everyone has to wear a mask, but we're leaving the determination of what is a mask to the boards of health and those sort of medical practitioners who can get better advice. I think the big question on a lot of people's minds are mask versus gator and also thickness of mask. And so we worded it this way to say it has to be approved, but we're leaving the determination of what is approved to the boards of health and that sort of COVID team. That felt much more appropriate. I know, Mary Beth, I know I've seen a draft document from the nurses come through and around. I don't know how close we are to having that ready, but I know the public is very eager to know what kind of mask it should be getting for their children. So that's sort of an important point to look at. The only other thing that we changed, if you go down to the top of page two, which has to do with disciplinary actions, and this is the part that sort of is good and consistent. So it says, "The Hamilton Wenham School District Handbooks will outline the disciplinary actions that would take if a student refuses to comply with the mask policy." So again, we've deferred that to the individual handbooks, and that was at the superintendent's request to not specify discipline in this document. So those are really the only changes that we customized. I added our logo. I tidied the formatting. I tried to make it look polished. And it came to us from the NASC. So that's what Policy did, and we did approve it by a vote of 3 to 0 at our subcommittee meeting a week ago, so.
Anna, can you go to the bottom again? I'm sorry. Those are the legal references.
Well, I was kind of looking at the bottom, the second page, just to make sure what it was saying, pertaining to school committees, I mean, schools of the disciplinary action.
One of the things that is in this policy is that everyone has to wear a mask. We're not limiting it, or we're not exempting those that are in first grade, kindergarten, and preschool, so.
I'm sorry, Peter, that's just my comment, that we did add that pre-K through 12.
That's right, yeah.
Yep.
I think that was, Mary Beth, if you go up a little bit, that was on the first page. The first page, second sentence.
Peter? Peter?
I have a question. When it comes to, I guess, the disciplinary actions, is that in consultation with the association?
We will share them with them. That's something that there'll be a draft, draft procedure, and I would anticipate that we will review that with our union reps and get their feedback on it as well.
I just know across the state, there's different levels of disciplinary actions. Some very strict, some still strict, the less strict. It's just, you know, we're talking about lives at stake here. We've heard from teachers who are, who are at risk and family members who are at risk, so it needs to be strict.
Peter, because it's a disciplinary matter, and it has to go into the handbook, it has to be removed, it has to be reviewed by the site council, which is made up of 50% staff, 50% whatever. which is made up of 50% staff, 50%, whatever, parent community representatives. So in that, at the high school level, that's at the high school level. So at the high school level, you know, those people who are on that will be members of the union, presumably, so.
Perfect. You are, love it, Michelle, that you, you know, you are just an absolute wealth of knowledge.
All types of things. And the other thing is that when those changes are made to the handbook, those have to be given to us, you know, a review of the changes. So we should be seeing that probably either at our next meeting or the meeting after, so.
You are a rock star. Thank you.
Well, and Peter, I want to add too, that unless it's changed in the first draft of the health metrics that the Boards of Health were working on, that compliance with safety procedures was one of the subjective measures. My not, my, I believe that's one of them, actually, it's not measurable in terms of quantity, but I believe they were using a scale of fair compliance, good compliance, and very good compliance as one of the identified health metrics. So if we find that the kids are drifting in, you know, away from very good compliance, just to good compliance, that's actually one of the agreed-upon health metrics. So I would think, to some degree, Mary Beth, I mean, that's, my interpretation of including that as a metric means that that will be considered as part of a compliance discipline.
It's something, was something else we're asking our teachers to monitor?
Well, yes, but ultimately, you know, that measurement may be something that comes through disciplinary information. That's been amorphous, I guess is the word for it. It's not really taken form yet.
All right. It, one of the things, just in terms of structure, what we are planning on doing is having an appendix to handbooks that will have COVID-related procedures documented.
Yeah, which will include, like, that medical self-check in the morning and all of that stuff, yeah. Because there'll be, there's more than just this.
Correct, yeah.
Are we, as a school committee, approving those or not? Because I know handbooks were, the school committee's supposed to approve, so I just wanted to see.
High school.
And what we're planning on doing at the high school level is the, the high school handbook itself will stay the same, and there will be this appendix. So what I would, what I would bring forward to the committee is the appendix that is developed.
Yeah, because we actually already looked at the changes in the other thing. All right, so I was looking up that policy that says that we can put aside a policy, it's like a policy approval policy or something like that.
And that's because this is considered an emergency policy? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I wonder if it's in here.
While you're looking, I know there's a question. Someone wants to know, that is a clear face shield considered to be approved face covering?
It does not cover your face.
I can answer that. That would not be approved. There are some circumstances where someone might add a face shield, working with some particular students, but from a family perspective, no, because it does not have the same protection that a mask does.
I was gonna answer, but I, it's better coming from you. Thank you.
Mary Beth, do you know when we'll have a list of what's approved? Do you know what the timeline is for that?
Yeah, the nurses were, were discussing, headed, just did, first of all, I need to share just an awesome training with our staff today, with lots of protocols. And so they were, they were discussing the types of masks that would be, be appropriate for people to bring in. But once, they've been working right now, currently focused on staff training. But I know that right behind that is their communication to parents about about appropriate masks. And they are, they're even going as far as creating a video to show people how to put the masks on appropriately.
And that might be ready by the time they have the health forum on September 3rd at 7 o'clock. September 3rd at 7 o'clock, there's a health forum. Keep your eyes out for it. Okay, so the policy is A1011. We can set aside the normal order of approving policies by a majority vote. So is it, can we have a motion from Dana to set aside the order for approving policies?
Sure. I move that we set aside the order for approving policy for this face covering policy before us.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Stacy, the second, okay. Does anyone want to discuss or need clarification on what we're doing there?
Do we want to make the motion for this one and the next motion as well? Do we have to do both at the same time, or is it individual?
It'd be nice if we could do them both.
All right. Okay, so I might, may I amend the motion?
We're gonna ask Dana if she would be willing to withdraw her motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Great. Dana, would you like to make a different motion?
Sure. I move that we, oh shoot, now I forgot what we're doing. We, we-
We're suspending the normal order, yeah.
We suspend the normal approval order for the two policies before us this evening, face coverings and policy issues for the pandemic.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so Michelle gets the second on that. All right, so does anybody need clarification on what we're doing?
Yes, so we're voting
We're voting-
In this policy.
We're voting to forego having a first and second reading.
Right, but we are voting, also we're voting in this policy.
Not yet.
Not yet. Next, that'll be the next thing, Peter. First, we have to suspend the rules.
Right.
And then, if we suspend the rules, then we'll vote on the policy.
Okay.
Okay, great. So Anna?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
David?
He's here.
Yeah, he had, he's gotta do the mute thing and everything.
Yes.
Thank you, David. And Michelle Bailey is a yes. So, we will now proceed to a motion about approving the face coverings policy.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee approve the face covering policy as presented by the Policy Committee.
Okay, we need a second.
Second. By Stacy?
Stacy, a second, and thank you for announcing your name. It helps. All right, does anybody want to discuss more, anything about that policy?
I have a question.
Great.
How has this, is the association in an agreement with this policy?
This is been requested to be approved. And Mary Beth, I think they were originally the ones who had come up with the idea of pre-K to 12, but you certainly promoted that early as well.
The request for the policy and the request for the line that the disciplinary action be in handbooks came from our association.
I just, because we're being asked to vote on something that hasn't been strictly defined yet. It's, it says it's going to be put in the handbook, but we haven't, we don't have any language in the handbook yet.
The group cannot create that until there's a policy stating that it needs to be created. So once we approve this, then they can approve a disciplinary action, which then they can put in a handbook, which then will come back to us.
So it will come back to us, though, so we can vote on it?
Because it will be a change to the high school handbook.
Okay, as long as we have a chance to vote on it. I just didn't want to vote on anything that's open-ended.
Yeah, normally, we wouldn't necessarily, but because it's a change to the handbook, we would.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so we will proceed to a vote. Dana?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
David?
No.
No. Peter?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey, yes, that will pass by a 6 to 1 vote. All right, now we have a policy issues for the pandemic, which is-
So this was, this was quite an undertaking. So the backstory in this, again, the NASC directed us to develop sort of some policies for the pandemic. And generally speaking, the high-level overview, as I understand it, is that as a result of the situation, the superintendent may have to sort of undertake decisions that are irregular from policy, that might otherwise take time to codify, things are in flux. So it's, it's, there's a lot of references to the reopening plan. Not all of the references in this policy are in, are in our specific reopening plan. A lot of it is sort of just procedural, and frankly, it's really redundant. When you read the clauses, it's, you know, upon consideration of DSE, da-da, the school committee authorizes the superintendent to do XYZ. So again, this came to us from NASC, their legal counsel vetted it. The Policy Subcommittee went through it block by block and had a few questions about what exactly they were talking about. At the end of that meeting, my beloved Policy Subcommittee members charged me and voted me in to work with Dorothy Presser, our NASC liaison, to make it appropriate, answer some questions. We had asked some questions about homeschooling applications, and then there were some references to things that we didn't actually have in our plan. So one of the suggestions was to change the word from shall, which is prescriptive and binding, to may, just to give ourselves flexibility. So a lot of the things are, we may do it, which means you could and you couldn't. So again, we haven't tinkered with this too much, because it was developed by the NASC through their legal counsel, and it's all pretty straightforward. So that's what we did. When I worked with Dorothy, we, it was pretty basic stuff. I changed those words, I capitalized school committee, I added the logo. I made everything reopening plan, because the original language was more generic. There was a reference to sort of an internal note that was almost a typo that they said we could just take out. So that's what it is. And in the back of it, on page 5, Mary Beth, if you go all the way to the back, they included notes from the NASC to sort of explain where this came from and why it's here. And the committee, the Subcommittee decided it was important to keep those in the document, just as sort of a historical record of where did this policy come from? Why did we passing it? What does it mean? So on and so forth. So we thought that this was a good piece of sort of historical context. We didn't want to eliminate it from policy if people had questions later on.
So why don't we get a motion to approve it, and then we can ask questions?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee approve the policy issues for the pandemic as presented.
For a second.
Second.
By Stacy.
I think Anna beat you to it, but it's because you said your name. Second by Stacy.
I don't care either way.
All right, so, um, do people have questions about this? You might notice that many of the things say that the superintendent can change the policy with the approval of the school committee, and some things are just that. So that, it's possible we're gonna be seeing a lot of requests to sort of just like, do things a little differently this year. And one example that Dorothy Presser had given me was, we have the community service requirement as a graduation requirement. We may determine that that is difficult to get done, and-
That's on the bottom of page two, if you want to pull it up, without specific language.
Somebody could bring forward that we need to adjust our requirement. And then, we would vote that. Or maybe the state will come out with something about you don't have to pass the MCAT, since kids seem to not be getting as much education and ability to actually take the test. And then, we could amend that. But we don't really know what we don't know yet, is part of it. And these are kind of like things we're gonna work through.
Well, and Michelle, what you're saying, that language is almost verbatim in almost every bullet point. The superintendent may, blank, 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 with you, per vouch of the school committee. So it's sort of setting the stage for that as it, as it sort of goes through.
So Anna, remind me again, so this is basically verbatim from what the NASC is wanting us to add, and then you added the last part of-
No, they, that was part of their original, too. That notes from the NASC was actually included in their document. I just moved it to the back, because it made more sense, and it frankly made it look messy. So I kept it as sort of a historical footnote. But the only substantive changes that we made, and actually, while we're kind of looking at it, there was a part about suspension, actually, the part we're looking at says "discipline and its suspension expulsion with remote learning rates." Initially, that particular blurb had a note about homeschooling. And the committee and the superintendent, we all said, why is there a note about homeschooling? We're not really, you know, homeschool students aren't really under the jurisdiction of the school district. So that was a question I reached out to Dorothy with, and she said, yes, you can go ahead and take that out. So, but otherwise, the, otherwise, we didn't really change anything from the NASC. Does that, does that answer the question, Stacy?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Superintendent, I have a question about a sort of a feature of it while we're on this page. So for time on learning, file ICICA ID, I'm curious to know how close we're gonna come to hitting the 25-hour-a-week curriculum sort of guidance in the remote and hybrid options, since a lot of things can't count, and there's gonna be time washing hands. And do you have any idea how much modification to time on learning we're gonna have to have there?
But there, I wonder if everybody's muted.
It's possibly Peter?
Yeah, or just-
No, it's David. David Polino is not muted, and I can hear his background notes.
Oh, is it Pete? He did. It was you, David. You have the party going on. Thanks.
Sorry, all the other kids are in the other room.
Yeah, thank you.
So the time on learning for next year has been adjusted from DESE, and we are required to meet their guidelines. So as we are designing programs, we have to be mindful of the time that has been put forth. Again, they have reduced it from previous years. As you know, we have gone from 180 to 170 school days, and there is further reduction in terms of weekly time on learning. But it is something that we're required to do, and we will, we have designed a plan that will enable us to do that.
Do you know what the weekly time on learning requirement is now?
Off the top of my head, no. I would have to look that up, and I wouldn't want to put it out inaccurately.
Okay, so, but whatever DSE is required, we will be able to meet with the hybrid plan that we're doing, including extra time for handwashing and movement and all those things?
Correct. We will be-
We're usually well in excess of the 990 and 900 that's required. So the fact that we're altering should be fine. Because we're usually well in ex, well, well in excess, so that-
I know, but so many things are unusual. I guess my, my, the root of my, the root of my question is, I know a lot of people have been asking for sort of a daily schedule, you know, like a day in the life of sixth grader, a day in the life of a third grader. And parents are sort of trying to evaluate, what is my kid really gonna be doing during the day? Which then led to the question of, how much time are we losing to COVID-related preparations? And how much time is that gonna be spent during the day? And then, I know just in general, you know, lunch and recess never count, right? I mean, there's certain things that are always exempted from it. So I personally would love sooner than later to see some sort of a daily schedule so people can really understand what their kids are gonna be doing. And then, that will make me feel better, that we're gonna really hit the time on learning. That was the only part of this policy that made me say, ooh, I'm a little nervous there.
Yeah, and that is something that we're currently working on, Anna, with the intent of publishing that on our website. So right now, what, our focus has really been getting teachers back in school, being prepared for their entry. And as we move forward, we will quickly pivot to start to push out information to families. But that is on the radar screen to get that done. And so I will hopefully be able to bring this, that to the committee in the near future.
Chair, now-
Next one, sorry, baby. Dana?
I, just for clarification, Anna, can you, are the parentheses with the notations, those come from the NASC?
That's a sort of a lexicon reference to their category system. So within the policy lexicon of the NASC, we're sort of slowly working our way through what that means. So that's like a reference, like I'll think of it like a Library of Congress heading, but for the NASC policies.
Okay, well- Okay, well, that, that's what I thought it was and it's still mysterious to me, but I'm glad to know that that's what it is. Thank you.
Well, A is for administration and I is for instruction and all the rest of them don't match.
Excellent.
Oh, actually, I take that back. I think F might be for finance. But yeah, the rest of them don't match, so. All right. So there's probably more to come. This is really just giving Mary Beth the authority to request changes in policy from us. So in these specific things. If there's no more questions.
Is it really to request changes? Because it's, it seems like it's giving the authority to make changes without the request.
Some of them do. Some of them say with the approval of the school committee and some of them don't. Like the one on graduation says the school committee would approve. But then there are some that don't.
I mean, there's some information in here that we haven't even gotten out yet, you know.
What?
You know, school assignments, job assignments, there's stuff that I don't even know here yet as a school committee member that we're basically handing over, you know, the ability to change without actually having a plan in place.
Yeah, so for instance, school assignment, the policy says that it's done by the school principals. So we're, we don't, we're not really a school that says, you know, if you live within this neighborhood, you get assigned here or there. But you know, it does give Mary Beth the authority to do it differently if she wanted to. Like if she wanted to, she hasn't, but if she had wanted to say, oh, all the first graders are going to be at Buick or and all the second graders are going to be at Winthrop, she would have had the authority to do that.
Make it clear that that is not something that we are.
Not happening. There's enough moves going on without. Does anybody else have questions? All right, so we had a motion to approve this in a second, so we'll go ahead and vote. Peter.
You had to come to me first.
Sorry, I noticed that. Thanks.
I'm still thinking.
Do you want to pass for a second and we'll come back?
Sure, thank you.
Okay. Stacy?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
David?
No.
Peter?
I have, I'll have to say no.
No. Michelle Bailey is a yes, so that will pass by a five to two vote. Okay, so we'll be looking forward to some new ones coming forward, I imagine. Okay, now, the next thing on our agenda is to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Hamilton One of Education Association. We met with them yesterday and because the process is for the association to vote and ratify before the school committee, there was not time for that to happen. So we're hopeful that they'll be able to schedule a vote sometime between now and our next meeting on the second so that we can have that in place before school starts. So we'll stay tuned on that. It, we'll see how that goes. Building updates. So is Tom Geary going to handle this or you, Mary Beth, or?
He is. So Tom, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and I thank you, a host.
Excellent.
I know I saw lots of cars there. I've also seen lots of like work trucks from some New Hampshire ventilation groups. So there's a lot going on at our building.
Certainly is. All right.
Tom is doing that. I'd like to recognize Tom and his team. I know the remarkable number of hours Tom is inputting in and his entire team. They have been working over the weekend and I had the opportunity to visit schools today. And the custodial crew is just been remarkable and we owe them a great gratitude for ensuring that classrooms are set up and the, the way in which they are extending themselves in service to our schools.
Sure, thank you Superintendent Benios.
I'm going to begin with the action status of ventilation systems district wide. First, I call attention to the share icons, trying to be as open and transparent with our process and the work involved as possible. You know, the learning environments are something I'm paying attention to as a parent. And I know that many other folks in the community, in our community for Hamilton One of are paying close attention to the work that we're doing. There's been hundreds of views of our status report that we posted online, which we all try to update on a daily basis. So the, where you see an icon, it's also listed in the agenda materials for the public. You can click on, and see in live time what we're doing with certain areas. And then also here is the report from EH and E. So as of today, since we've started this work, since the report came out in earlier this month, we have 57 of the 84 items complete. And I'm going to skip a row, so be patient. 13 of them are assigned to contractors and 14 are considered parts on order. This was for the MERC 13 filter upgrades for all of our devices district wide. And as I shared in a previous meeting, you know, this was a recommendation from ASHRAE, which is the peer group for heating and air conditioning engineers. So everybody across the nation is struggling, you know, to get these immediately. But I do have confidence that we will have them in, by the first week in September to be able to complete all of that work, no later than the 11th of September. The work should go by pretty fast. A lot of our units have already had their preventive maintenance performed on them. So it should just be a matter of a quick vacuum and inserting the filter. Just to show you the progress, and this is, these are also some of the graphics that we share in the action report. You can see where we started on the 17th of August about tracking a lot of the progress and you can see how those numbers fluctuate. So on the 17th, you saw our 24 complete. And as you move through these pie graphs, you know, towards the end, it's starting to look a little more like Pac-Man where it's eating up the other open items. So we're looking to close that green circle as we move forward. And, you know, we're also prioritizing spaces as we're doing this, making sure we're concentrating efforts on classrooms first, occupied spaces first, and then areas that we feel might not be used to its full capacity. For example, and I believe it was a music room at the Winthrop was not being fully occupied at this moment. So we dedicated the resources to rooms so we could speed up the classroom turnover. If anybody has questions on ventilation, I can pause before I go into cleaning. Or I can go through cleaning and however you wish to handle it.
Let's do these quick. So Anna had her hand up.
So Tom, I want to also echo Mary Beth's appreciation for all the hard work you've been doing. It's like a massive renovation project in short order. I guess my concern is really pragmatic, which is, as I've expressed a couple of different times, this is still a position of hope, right? We're hopeful this will all come together. But this is one of the things that will really, really stop the reopening of school in a safe fashion. So now that it's been, I don't know, 10 days or whatever, since we last had an update and I can see the parts are in order and I see they've been assigned, I continue to have concern that we're not going to make it and we're going to pull the rug out on people right before school starts. And that's one area of concern. So I guess I want to get a really, you know, a really candid answer with you. Like I don't need to hear the sugarcoated version. Like I'd love to hear straight talk about how realistic do you think this really is? And then secondly, you know, I just want to be responsive to the concerns of our teachers and their comfort level in the building or lack thereof. And it does concern me sort of on a high level that we're asking our teachers to go into buildings for work and our buildings are not yet ready for them to really be there. And I know that we're making exceptions for a number of people and kids, but I think it would be fairly tone deaf of us as a committee to not acknowledge the fact that we're asking our teachers to go into buildings before the buildings are technically safe. And that troubles me that we're asking staff to do that. So I'm not sure there's something more you could do. I actually agree that it seems like you're doing everything you can do from your position, but it worries me that we're not going to be ready and it's all going to fall apart. And it worries me that we're asking our teachers to work in buildings that by the sort of chart I'm looking at are getting better every day, but they're not yet at the level that we would define as safe. And correct me if I'm wrong, if school was supposed to open tomorrow, we're not ready, right? Like if it wasn't September 14th, if we were supposed to open tomorrow, would we be able to open?
We wouldn't be doing all of the things, if things weren't normal.
I'm happy to, and I am happy to answer it. So to the first part of the question is, you know, if this list isn't done, am I going to be calling, you know, the superintendent the night before the 14th and say, yeah, we didn't get it done, you know, superintendent, we have to, we have to look at canceling. That was one of the risks right up front, so we scenario plan around those risks. Just yesterday, we received the backup, the order for 10 HEPA filters for spaces. So if we had an issue in a space that we were waiting on parts, we would then look at bypassing a unit, bringing in as much fresh air as possible and installing one of the HEPA units. I do also believe that on this list, we do have enough swing space throughout the buildings where if we had a problem and it's isolated to a certain room, we would be able to shift. And I wouldn't be doing that on the night of the 13th. That would be, you know, well in advance. If it's not done by Saturday prior, then that's when I'm going to communicate, but.
That was my next question, actually, was like, what is the drop, what is our drop dead date? Like when do we, when do we call it that we're not ready?
Right now, I don't feel uncomfortable with our buildings being, you know, I would say for the majority of our learning spaces, I do not have a sense of discomfort in any of, any of them as of today. You know, some of the units that make it on the list for certain items that are on the list, you know, if a, if a air return damper is not working, for example, that's not the biggest concern to me right now because saving energy and recycling, you know, the air in the room isn't on the top of the priority list. So we're looking at making sure we have fresh air introduction before some of those repairs are done. As far as what the, bringing teachers in as well with some of these items that aren't complete, you have to remember that the design intent behind a lot of the ventilation equipment is usually designed around a low capacity of up to 30 people in a space. So the majority of our learning spaces across the district have sufficient outside air. And I would raise a flag if we had any spaces that were unsafe for people. I could, I really could not, you know, ethically do that.
Dana and then Stacy.
Tom, mine is just a practical question. I have the link to the document because I was getting it through a link that was sent through the school committee. Where does the public get the link? I know it's out there, but I, is it on the school website? Like where is it?
I don't have it either.
I may be able to answer that. That is actually embedded into our reopening plan.
Oh, okay. So I just, because I actually tried to find it through as a public link today and I.
There right now, so it's a great question. But right within the plan, that, that link is.
You should note that this will be also, that we are in the middle of refreshing our website for the return to school. So this will be one of the documents you see right at the top.
Yeah, that's annoying, by the way, that pop up. Stacy?
I just want to also say thank you, Tom, for all your hard work. Since you've been here, you've done a really thorough and great job, giving options, giving information, sharing everything. And I know sometimes our school district as a whole, we have a little bit of issues trying to get that communication straight, but we are working on it. But I just want to thank you, Tom, and even you, Mary Beth, for all your hard work during this time. I know we as school committee members are working hard, but you're working really hard, so thank you.
Thank you very much. That means a lot.
So.
I have a question, Chair.
I'm sorry, go for it.
I had my hand, I, how am I supposed to, am I supposed to raise my hand physically or in the?
Whatever. If you raise it physically, I'll see it. If you raise it there, I might not. But you can.
I just don't know what to do. Okay. I guess my question has to do with around, two questions. One around staffing has, is there anyone in the custodial staff who has requested a leave of absence? And the second question is, how, is there going to be a way to monitor whether rooms are being cleaned every night? Just because historically, the rooms were not cleaned before this. How can we be assured that they're going to be cleaned after the, during the pandemic?
If you don't mind, I will take the opportunity to make a corny segue into the cleaning and disinfection portion of the building update. And then I can, I'm happy to answer, so it doesn't get lost in the presentation, that as of right now, I'm not aware of any custodians that have requested leaves. But, you know, you know, these things evolve, but I'm not aware of anybody that's considering it. So moving into the school daily cleaning and disinfection procedure.
Can we give Michelle Horegon one second to ask a question?
Oh, yeah, I can go back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Tom. I think you answered this two weeks ago. Based on the assessment from the consulting firm, the building is safe for a limited capacity, even in the midst of a pandemic? Is that correct?
The, I can't say yes or no because I think that, you know, with a novel virus and a pandemic, that it's, it would be impossible for even an engineer to, you know, really sign off and certify that it is. We can say that, and I'm not trying to dance around the answer to that question. I hope I'm, I'm trying to be genuine and say that, you know, we're returning all of our ventilation equipment to its design intent.
Perfect, thank you.
And I'm really sorry for giving you a non-answer. That's just, it's a really difficult question.
Yeah, yeah. As we've often said, this is a pandemic. This is a once, hopefully in a lifetime situation for us. I feel like you've and Mary and Superintendent Benios have done all you can to prepare for this unprecedented situation. So I'm glad that you didn't say yes and take into consideration that this is fluid and moving. But I feel confident that you are, we're moving in the right direction, so.
Yeah, I think it's also important as, you know, as I'm going to go into more detail with the cleaning and disinfection is that even if someone were to say that, yep, the building is completely safe, we don't want to offer people a false sense of security. We want to maintain vigilance on all of our mitigation efforts, right? And I mean, with that, I can explain what we're doing on the cleaning and disinfection end.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. So as I shared before in the ventilation update, the reason for the share icon at the top is that, you know, we're, even though this is an internal document, I think it's, you know, a good practice and a best practice in these times to share with parents and the rest of the community of what we're doing for cleaning and disinfection as it is an important mitigation strategy. So first, I think it's important for you, the committee, and also the listening public to know that there is a clear distinction by definition between cleaning and disinfection. And if you read the label on a bottle of disinfectant, it is going to tell you to clean the surface first before disinfecting, right? So. It is going to tell you to clean the surface first before disinfecting, right? So. I would like to give some sort of comfort to parents at home that we're not just running into classrooms like the Ghostbusters with the new electrostatic machines. Is that we're being planful and methodical about how we're treating uh the chemicals. We don't want to solve one issue of disinfection, but create another for children that suffer breathing difficulties or have skin sensitivities. So as I have in this, I'm going to go backwards for a second because this is our cover page on our um, our protocol document. And when I say maintaining clean learning environments requires a team effort. In the cleaning and disinfection procedures that um I have linked in here, you will um find some of the granular detail. I've spoken in um multiple community sessions with the elementary, middle and um some of the high school staff too. And. Had shared that students wouldn't, wouldn't be responsible for disinfecting their desks. However, we're looking for the community effort for students, for staff. To assist everybody else by wiping their desk in between classes if they're moving. Um, and that would be with a safe product. That would be safe for children to use. So I would love to point everybody into the direction to read the detail in our protocols. And, you know, to answer Peter's question from before, and we say, you know. Our, um, if classrooms weren't clean before, how can we expect them to be clean now? And I do think that the custodians were cleaning the classrooms, but now we're just creating a system to do that more efficiently and effectively. And we're just looking at different things where there was a strong focus on uh floor care and furnishing and buffing floors before. We're taking that out of the schedule and dedicating that towards disinfection and cleaning. And uh, you know, for example, tomorrow, I'm going to be walking around and inspecting every single restroom. In the district um with a strong focus on the student restrooms to make sure that it's up to the level. Uh, the baseline level that we want to establish for our district. I am anticipating some work in that area and will be transparent with the staff on how we're going to address that. So a plan is great and all, but uh we have to make sure that we can, it's feasible and that we're tracking compliance. So every space in the district um from restroom to office to classroom. Uh, we'll have a checklist. And as you can see here, I, I shared the classroom cleaning checklist. There's a different checklist for restrooms and a different uh for common areas. Um, as you see shaded by cohort here is that on the left column is the date that we're expecting each cohort in. Um, and we're getting that uh sign off from the custodian at the end of every single shift that these were done and the areas assigned to them. And, you know, finally, I want to close by saying that I have a lot of faith that our students can help us with this and we just have to make it efficient. We have to make it safe and we have to make it sustainable. So uh the district has purchased uh wipe kits. And we're not talking about just stuff off the shelf from Clorox. We've actually invested in a system. So. Each classroom will be, will be equipped with the dispenser and we're able to control the chemical that we're putting into that rather than just buying a brand. You know, that would be used for disinfection. We can make sure it's safe for our students to use. We will be, if you don't mind, I'm going to click around a bit, but we'll be seeking um something on the safer chemical ingredients list from the EPA. Um, which is safe for children to use and we're going to target using a green product too. So when I say planned acts of kindness, these are all items um on our um mitigation strategy list, right? So that's staying home when you're sick. That's a planned act of kindness, right? Wearing a face covering is a planned act of kindness. Good hygiene, good hand hygiene and hygiene too is a planned act of kindness for others. Physical distancing and then in clean environments are all, you know. Those are all planned acts of kindness. And I think that that's more of the conversation I want to have with people is that. Yep, it is going to take a team effort to keep our buildings clean.
Peter, did you have a question?
Yes, it was the same question I asked a while ago. I guess. We're. Custodial staff was already stretched thin before this because I know my room, when I worked there for four years, went days without being cleaned. Days and days and days. And now we're asking them to clean multiple times per day. How can we, besides a checklist where they self-sign, how are we going to ensure that the rooms are being cleaned? Because if the rooms are not being cleaned, this is a deal breaker on multiple levels. You know, we're letting down the students, the. The teachers, the staff and the community if the rooms aren't being cleaned. How can we, how can we verify that the rooms are being cleaned?
Well, the verification will be, you know, it's not just walking by the checklist. It's, it's. I guess you, you have to inspect what you expect, right? So if the expectation is that, you know, the, they do these tasks. Then we have to follow up as a leadership team and make sure that they're being done and people just aren't walking through the process. It, it's.
If we're not cleaning, this whole thing falls apart.
Yeah, and, and that's why we've actually, I let, listed this bullet point that I'll highlight. So part of our internal metric review, right? Aside from just looking at what town or uh city is, is unshaded, yellow or green. Like, we have to look at our internal metrics, right? We have to make sure that people are complying with face covering. We have to make sure that staff, uh, the custodial staff are fulfilling their obligation. These are the metrics that we'll be able to track, right? And these are items that we're going to be discussing with our uh task force when we're bringing up those internal metrics. If we're not able to have a sustainable cleaning program. Then you're right. It is a big risk to the students because it's a major mitigation strategy. But I, you know, having the data and having checklists is a way to ensure compliance and we have to, that's our job as leaders to make sure that we're following through.
May I ask one more question? Oh, um, there's the checklist where the custodial staff checks off whether they cleaned. And I know the administration will be going through. Will, will the teachers also be providing feedback either through a, like a Google Doc or, you know, some, some kind of. Multiple layers of assurance that the rooms are being cleaned, you know, several people are all saying it's done. Then I'm, then I'm reassured. If several people are saying it's not being done. So I guess rather than just that printout that I see on the screen is, can this be done through a, a shared document? That the teachers of the room will check off that the room was cleaned, uh, the administration will check off, the custodial staff will check off. Can it, can it have multiple layers of verification?
In other words, your question is, where is this posted? Is it posted like on the door like they do with the like?
Yeah, exactly.
Or is it in some book somewhere in the custodian's closet?
Right, exactly.
Nope, this, this was sent out to the schools to print on heavy stock to be posted on every location because I'm expecting that. This, it, it's a team effort, right? So we don't have to look at it as punitive. We have to look at it as, all right, why didn't this get done, right? Um, and I would be really surprised if our teaching staff. And our uh TAs and our nurses and everybody else wouldn't reach out to me directly.
And the principal, right, Tom?
It, it should always start in the building with the principal. But, you know, if it needs to escalate, it's, you know, try to make myself as available as possible for people to feel comfortable bringing concerns and treating them in a kind and fair manner.
You know, reiterate, if you look here, uh, each day, if it's checked off and it says a clean sink and somebody goes into the classroom and it's not a clean sink. Um, then they, they would, they could bring that attention to their supervisor and, and um let them know that there's. Something that was checked off and did not look like it was accomplished.
Gary's sake, I did, I, if it was a, if it was a shared document online and he could just access it if the teachers and the administration all checked off, yes. This is good to go. He would see it immediately without anybody having to walk around the building. It would just be more efficient, I thought. Just an idea.
No, and I thank you, like, and I think that, you know, that coupled with random surveys out to staff. You know, just a customer service survey, uh, go a long way. You know, what is your comfort level? How do you feel about the level of cleanliness? You know, I'm comfortable with the talent that we have in our district amongst our staff. They've done a phenomenal job, Bummer. And then flexible as I could describe. With the ever-changing directives that keep coming from, you know, federal, state, local, no offense. You know, they're really flexible with what they're doing. So.
All right, well, thank you.
I have a lot of faith and I know I'm up for the challenge as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Superintendent.
Stacy, are you still there?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. I didn't hear. You got cut out. Um, anyways, um, I just want to ask you, Tom. So we're following all the guidelines that have been set forth, right? Cause I know you've changed from really, you know, polishing the floors now to it's about cleaning et cetera to um follow the guidelines. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Um, that's correct. Everything that's in our cleaning and disinfection plan. Um, aligns with the DESI guidance. It aligns with the CDC guidance. So, yes, it's, it's all based in our, if you re-review the literature. Uh, there are citations for all of the source data that you can refer back to.
Great. So, and I do like how you say the planned acts of kindness. And if we could all work together, we can really, you know, make this happen. Because I know this community, everybody wants to work together and we want to think of our, uh, our students and everybody's safe. So I appreciate everything you're doing, Tom.
No, and thank you for actually reminding me. I would be remiss if I did not publicly thank our student summer helpers who were phenomenal. Everybody did a wonderful job and it was really good to see kids like in our buildings, right? Um, that was, you know, it's a big reward of the job in school facilities, actually seeing people in them. So they were a big help and it was great to have them all summer.
Dana.
Thank you. Um, Tom, I just, you, I think you said this already, but I just want to make sure that, um, maybe, and maybe this is really a question for you, um, Superintendent Benios. But um, I, I just want to make sure that, that it is, um, that the teachers are aware that they can go directly. To you, Tom, if they are concerned. Is that accurate that they, um, that the teachers are, can go directly to you if they're concerned about cleaning issue or a maintenance issue?
I mean, I, I can speak to that, Dana. And Tom has been remarkably um open to feedback. To receiving emails from, from teachers, from parents um that have questions about the system. I, I think the level of transparency he's shown in terms of the HVAC system shows how invested he is in being sure that. People have good data and can ask questions if they, they have them. Sometimes from an efficiency point of view, it can be easier to go to a supervisor in the building. But I, I have found Tom, and I, I believe our staff would tell you that they have found Tom to be incredibly responsive if a question comes up.
And um, uh, we'll have Dana or Anna?
Thanks, Michelle. Um, I've just sort of been sitting here quietly thinking about the student cleaning aspect of it and thinking about compliance issues. And I think older kids are probably going to be better than younger kids, but, you know, kids are trainable. I guess one thing I wanted to throw out there is that even amongst the green products, some of them are. You know, some of them have things in them that you don't necessarily want to have, or even if it's a green cleaning product. I'm, so I'm thinking through logistics, right? We all know that I'm a logistics person. So I guess my thought is. The kids are cleaning the desks. You have variable quality of cleanliness. So that's one thing. But then even if I use a green wipe on a desk. I wouldn't necessarily want my child to then go eat lunch without like actually washing their hands and washing the chemical off that they just had on their hand, even though it's quote-unquote green chemical. So that's one question I have is I, I still continue to be perplexed by the use of chemicals as cleaning as opposed to soap and water. That's a high level generalized comment. Um, and I'm concerned about kids touching all the stuff and then having lunch with no opportunity to actually wash the chemical off their hand. Second question has to do, if there are parents who do not want their children to clean desks, not disinfect. Is there going to be a way for parents to opt their kids out? And if so, what do we do in that situation? Is somebody else going to pick up the slack? Are the teachers going to do it? Are the other kids going to do it? Like, is it help your friend with their desk situation? Cause now you're just touching someone else's stuff. So I, I guess I, I mean, I know it's nitty gritty, but we're putting, like Peter said, we're putting a lot of stock on certain parts of this kind of work. And if they don't work, it doesn't work. So have you, can you address any of those questions or are we going to figure that out as we go?
Yeah.
I don't know. I think, um, I, I think I'm actually aligned with you on like the, what we're using for the chemical. Uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be, maybe I just used the, you know, the wrong term, but. Some school districts for this task are using Dawn dish soap and water as their chemical, as their cleaning agent. So yeah, reactivity and um safe for hands is very important as we're sourcing chemicals that students are going to be using. I'm using like the baby wipe test, right? Is it as safe as a Huggies, right? That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, but I still wouldn't put my hands in my mouth or touch food if I had touched Huggies. I'm just, I'm just raising it as a, as a potential objection parents might have. That's all.
Yeah, I, I, I can speak to that a little bit. Um, I, I had the, the ability to watch the nurses training today. And they were going through step by step how students will prepare their, their area for lunch. Um, and there will be a place in which they're, they're cleaning their hands, that they wiped on their desks. She talked about how they would take things out of their lunch bag. She actually used the, the book Bread and Jam for Francis, if anybody remembers that book. And how she, she prepares things coming out from their lunch box. So there's whole protocols and procedures. Teaching right down to the very youngest kids about how to do that and hopefully um in a developmentally appropriate way. When I was at Cutler, one of, spoke to one of the teachers and they said, I saw that. I think I'm going to buy that book for all teachers so they can share it with kids. And show them how to prepare your space for lunch. So um, we, we will, we will have those processes in place. And I, I continue to believe knowing the talent that we have in this district, we can get pretty good at helping students feel comfortable. Doing this and understanding why they need to do it, right? What's the why behind the actions? So. I would say, you know, that will continue to evolve the exact process that we go through. But the work is there, the procedures are outlined. And we, we, we should be able to manage a situation where we ask kids to wipe down their desks.
Yeah, I, I would like to add too, is that when we say students will wipe desks, it is, they're, will wipe their own desks. Uh, we would never ask like assign the job, you know, to little Johnny in kindergarten that you're the desk washer this week. This is just getting into a habit of much like when you go to the gym and you wipe the piece of equipment after. So you're leaving it better for the person in front of you. You know, that's what we're trying to get to.
So, Tom. Because I had the opportunity to speak with you yesterday, um, I, I didn't see here any information about the bathroom upgrades. Or um our electrostatic cleaning. So I didn't know if you could talk about that a little bit?
Sure, I'm happy to talk to it. I have the electrostatic is uh buried in our plan. Uh, that'll be uh done nightly. That's why it's on a checklist. So every single night, uh, we'll be using a chemical called Bioesq. It is the lowest rating on the health scale as you can get with the disinfectant. Uh, that'll be done only by custodians, the, the disinfection uh through the electrostatic applicators. We started last school year off, I think in October, they ordered them for each school, uh, never anticipating anything like this. But um, we've also put a handheld unit in every single school and a backpack unit which has a bigger tank. So the nightly disinfection should be efficient. We sourced the chemical. Um, we have provided enough so every classroom is equipped with at least one bottle of. Of this same disinfectant teacher use, if they feel comfortable doing that on their, uh, teaching stations, that's outlined in the plan. But they're not to be used around kids. Disinfectant, it's just as a best practice, should not be used by kids or around kids, so we have to be. Careful and planful when we're using them. And I'm sorry about, I forgot the second question.
You've been doing some upgrades to the bathrooms, some things, um, are automated now and some things are not, and could you just talk about that a little bit?
Yep, um, so we are upgraded or. At least secured a one-on-one replacement of all paper towels, soap and toilet paper dispensers in the district, so we're able to standardize the products we use across buildings. Uh, which helps us, A, get a better price, but B, allows us flexibility to be able to borrow if somebody runs out of something as well. The, uh, tour, the paper towel dispensers are battery-operated, hands-free, so you wave your hand in front of it. You know, dispenses the towel. The soap dispensers unfortunately are intent, um, this was even back in January or February when I started talking to our vendors about this. The dispensers went really quickly off the shelf, they're not manufacturing them, uh, quick enough for us to get them. But we did prioritize and made sure that we had the paper towels installed, as that is the last touch point for most people in a restroom. Uh, I thought was, that was the most, uh, high priority item to go touchless on. They stated before, I'm going to be touring every, each and every bathroom, doing, you know, hygiene inspection, make sure that they're clean. And make a punch list for improvement district-wide. Uh, but at the same time, I think it was brought up in the QA, I want to double-check on faucets. To see which ones need to be replaced, uh, before we, um, return back into the schools. And, you know, it's a best practice if they're available and we can start changing the bad faucets out for touch-free, that will be the standard going forward. So if we have to buy a faucet, we'll spend the extra fifty dollars to make sure that it's a touch-free faucet in the restroom. But that'll be part of my inspections tomorrow, but it's all. Everything, and I'll say it a thousand times, probably in every presentation I'm giving around buildings, is that. I use the word where it's feasible, because, uh, supply chains for construction materials and cleaning materials and PPE and air filters. Everybody is running behind manufacturing ones, um, so.
And the other thing that you mentioned yesterday, um, that I didn't see come up here, was about. During the normal course of time, you wouldn't have custodians going through cleaning the bathroom all day long, but you do have a plan for that now.
Yep, um, so in the, the protocol document, um, there will be three, uh, disinfection tours. Where the custodians will, um, have the log sheet posted by the main office. And through that tour, they will be disinfecting some of the, um, high, highly frequently touched surfaces such as handrails. Water fill stations, um. You know, different, uh, crash bars where we can't prop doors open. Uh, we're going to try to prop as many doors open as possible, but for some of them that require them to be closed, we'll be looking at door hardware. So three tours per day spaced out usually, uh, two hours apart. A custodian will go for, through the common areas, um, that includes the group restrooms. To make sure that they're adequately stocked and all the fixtures are disinfected, uh, three times a day.
Super, thank you. Peter, one quick question and then Michelle Horegon gets her chance and then.
Sorry. Two quick questions, uh, so. Who, so the students are going to be cleaning. Are we going to ask our, who's going to teach them how to clean, you know, their desk? And it's not just not the top of the desks. We're talking about every place you touch on your desk, whether it's underneath the chair, that, the seat. Who's going to teach them how to clean? Teachers?
I can, I can answer it quickly because it was in one of our, um, one of the plans is that we are. Working on a couple of short videos, I call it like TikTok style, even though we may not use the actual app. To be able to go through some of those things for, um, our students, right? We're not going to ask them to be scraping the gum from, you know, the bottom of the desk. Uh, but washing, wiping down the desktop is. I, 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 I think it's a really valuable life lesson, right, is to wipe something down. Especially in the midst of a global pandemic, right? So it'll be the expectation that they're wiping their desktops. This also goes hand-in-hand with all of the other mitigation strategies, um, that I mentioned, right? So, you know, good hand hygiene is going to prevent a lot of the, um, you know, Jeremy desktops, right? Students would be just wiping their own desktop, um, in elementary school when they arrive, I mean, I'm sorry, before they eat lunch. After they eat lunch and then at the end of the school day, so then the desk is clear for disinfection. Middle, high school level would be, um, and ask to wipe their desktop, uh, before they change class. And much like I use the analogy of the gym equipment, um, leaving it clean for the next person.
I would just ask that we expand from desktop to desk area, including chair. You know, the back of the seats, the edges where, where students touch, where they, when they, they pull in their seat, they're grabbing their. They're grabbing their chair, pulling it in, so I would just ask that we expand it beyond just desktop. And I get, my other question was, you had mentioned the last meeting that if all. Staff is on hand, all custodial staff is on hand, we have enough. Folks to maintain this cleaning schedule, but if someone is absent, then there's some rooms that aren't going to be cleaned. How has the appeal, you made an appeal to ask for, um, people to apply for part-time positions. I guess it's a two-part question, has anybody applied for part-time? Or would it be smarter to just bring on some more full-time folks, just to create that extra layer of security? To ensure that. Things are being cleaned, because of, again, I, I keep saying it, if the cleaning doesn't happen. We've let down, we're basically creating a contract with these parents and teachers and students. That we are going to clean, if we can adhere to that, then the whole, we've, we've let down. We've let down our, we've let down our end of the deal. Yeah, so, do we have folks applying and would it be better to bulk up and have an extra full-timer or two?
Um, more people always makes a job go, um, smoother. So you won't ever hear me turn down like the, um, the idea of having more, more staff. I think everybody would always welcome more staff. But I also have to. You know. Making what I say with, that we have the adequate staffing level provided everybody's at their post.
Sick, that sort of falls apart.
Yeah, but I think that we always have scenario plans for, you know, if somebody is out. If two people are out, it's that if three, four, or five people are out at the same time, I mean, that's. That's a tough scenario that we'd have to be creative and people would have to put in some long hours.
I mean, Lucy.
That we, we monitor at the school level. Um, and so we look at staffing and if Tom were to come to me and say that there is a. Challenge in terms of getting the work done, that maybe, you know, then that would be the time that I may come to the school committee. Um, but Tom is monitoring that and at this point, we feel like we have adequate staffing.
Michelle, your turn.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Superintendent.
Um, I just want to say, Tom, thank you. Um, and I, and Peter, I'm not. Diminishing your experience from four years ago, but I don't think you compare four years ago to what we've experienced in last year with Tom at the helm. Um, so I appreciate what you said, but I think we need to go with Tom, who's the professional. Secondly, I was fortunate enough to run with a high school friend who's the CEO of the Metro North YMCA. And she shared with me that since March, she has, um, had her daycare center in Lynn open. With no COVID cases reported whatsoever. The little kids, um, have followed the protocols, they know, uh, what's expected of them. They partake in the cleaning of the toys and everything they use, it's part of the responsibility. Tom, you had mentioned this, that it's teaching. And this is something that our kids will adhere to. And know that it's expected of them, if the parents want that to be, but it's doable. And we have a pla, we have a plan in place and protocols in place, so.
Yeah, I think I, I will close by saying that, while I appreciate you saying that things have improved. You know, much like everybody else in our profession, we're looking for that like continuous improvement, and I think that we have. We still have a long ways to go, infrastructure-wise in our facilities, cleaning-wise, and that, that's. You know, we, we, we're still striving for a higher standard, so.
Super, so the next thing is the health metrics. Or metrics, depending on what we're. Because it is sort of going to be a matrix of, of, um, factors, but it's going to be something that's measured, so it's also metrics. We do not have that exhibit tonight because the boards of health met, um, after three hours, they weren't quite complete. It is being worked on, um, also being formatted in a way that will be much more. Of an infographic, very, you know, something that you could see. On social media and understand in thirty seconds is what I've been promised, so that will be fantastic, and when we have that, we'll share out. Do you want to share anything else about that, Mary Beth?
Um, not, not at this time. Okay.
The next thing, um, Mary Beth, we forgot to talk about something in executive session, so we're going to go back to that at the end of the meeting. So, we're not actually going to talk about, um, a hundred percent of the supporting staff things, but. We just want to remind people that Martha Farrell is working on a welcome back, she's been in touch with Mary Beth. Um, about doing that and you can contact her on Facebook if you would like to help out. Do you know any more about it, Anna, or is that why you had your hand raised?
Uh, it's not why I had my hand raised, but I know Martha was doing, I think I saw another member of the community post on it as well, so I'm not sure if their forces have commerced or not. That was not why I raised my hand, though, but I support them.
Okay, that's kind of it, like, that's all we have.
Okay, well, can I, can I pose a question, like, can I ask something?
Maybe, what is it?
Um, so, I. I just want to acknowledge, you know, we had a number of teachers start this meeting with. Really heartfelt, legitimate, frankly heartbreaking kind of statements. For me?
I think you can't ask this question, because we're going to talk, go back to executive session to talk about that.
Well. My question is, you know, are we, is there any notion of revisiting our starting position? In light of what we're hearing from the teachers and the number of leaves that are coming out of the woodwork and what that means for our district?
Not right now, we aren't, because it's not on the agenda.
Okay, I, I just, I, I, I hear you, I just feel like. Okay, well, at some point, I would like to humbly request at the next meeting that we have a conversation about, again, the starting position for other reasons and what it's doing. What it's doing to our teachers.
A second. A second thing.
Because, so that can be part of that conversation, too.
Right, but it's not just the metrics, it's the position, but also, I guess, to some degree, when we talk about, so I thought supporting staff meant also staff morale. And it's distressing to me to hear reports from veteran teachers who are being forced to choose what to do. And I think the thing I want to sort of let the public know is that that's a consequence of the type of plan that we've chosen. It's not that, it's not that it's not possible, it's because of how we structured our plan. And I think it's important for the public to know that we have teachers in our district that have decades of experience that have reached out to the school committee, we've all gotten messages. We've heard from some people, um, meeting tonight. You know. There's a collateral loss of this tremendous district knowledge and district experience that's happening right now. And I guess it really breaks my heart that we're marching down a path with this plan. And a consequence of it is that we're going to lose potentially forever, because they might find other jobs in other districts that are more supportive, or they might not come back. I think the public should be aware that a consequence of choosing to start hybrid is that we've precipitated dozens of leave requests. And that when people come back to school, those teachers that they're expecting to be there, might not be there. And that's not because there's something fundamentally wrong, you know, with all plans, it's that we as a district have made a choice. To march down a path on a plan without our teacher's support, and I said that from the very beginning, that if we don't have our teachers, we don't have a plan. And all the health and building things aside, like, I'm concerned, I'm concerned from a really practical basis.
I'm going to stop this right now. We will discuss again next week, because we will have more information, but next week we'll be discussing the metrics and then we'll be.
Well, we're in a part of, we're in a part of tonight's agenda that's actually called supporting staff, so this is actually perfectly fine conversation to be having there. There's no, there's no exhibit here that's going to lead the, that could lead the conversation any other way. So just, you know, you can't just sort of stifle it because it's not, you know, uh. Conducive to sort of the storyline you're trying to put out. I, I think that Anna speaks, you know, from the heart and speaks for a lot of people. No, I'm not going to allow you.
A lot of people, where's, over eighty percent have said they would rather do hybrid.
Done with this topic, I put that on the.
I disagree, I'm asking, I'm asking for a vote to be put on the next agenda.
I put it on. Tell you why. Finally, I had asked Mary Beth, I put it on so that we could ask Mary Beth if there was a way that we, as the school committee, could go in and help the teachers. Whether it's setting up or whatever, at this point, we don't have a plan for that, we need to discuss that in executive session. That is the purpose of this. I'm sorry if it misled, misled people to think we were going to revote something we had voted. However, once the school committee has voted, that is our stance.
Until we call it for a new vote, I could call for a new vote right now. I can make a motion right now, that's how this works.
Well, but just, but just as a point of procedure, I, I would know we're not going to vote tonight, I, I get it, that is a point of.
On, you are out of order, okay, we are moving on. Different tenants report.
Okay, um, so a couple of things to share with the committee. One, I wanted to let folks know that, uh, today was our first day back for teachers. I wanted to recognize again the efforts of our custodial staff to prepare classrooms and buildings for people's return. Um, our, our nurses gave two different presentations today, one across the entire district, training, um, staff on protocols. Um, and then in, in, an optional in-person, uh, meeting as well with staff. They will be returning again tomorrow to meet with all staff to answer questions that people posted on the Q and A. One of the things that I know families are worried about and are looking for are their assignment to cohort groups. At this, at this time, we are anticipating having that information to families on September first. We are working through that, elementary is working and then middle school and high school, making sure that we are. Holding to our commitment to be sure that all siblings are in the same cohort group. Wanted to also make the community aware that, um, the DESI is now reporting that Edgenuity is, um, full. In terms of a platform, but that we are part of the group that has been, um, able to purchase the K through five. System, so if people see that coming out from DESI, know that we are not included in the group that is not able to access this tool. The, the final thing that I have for the committee this evening is there was a request to. Give a, a more detailed breakdown of the survey results, I had shared those results with the committee. There were, um, the number of, um, entries was more than the students that we had. So what I wanted to do is share with you, if I can just quickly pull it up here on my screen. There were a couple of duplicate entries, so we cleaned those up. Once people finished the survey, there were some folks that said, oh, I wanted this, and now I think that, it was a handful of people. So was asked to have a, a final update on that, so I'm going to share my screen with you so that you have that in front of you. And what you see here, um, our final numbers as principals have gone through, called families, if there was. And what you see here are final numbers as principals have gone through, called families if there was any question. You see what we have in terms of families selecting hybrid, what we have for fully remote. We also asked about people that were thinking about homeschooling, private school. And we, we still have a handful of families that are struggling to make a decision. And our administrators are working with them to finalize those numbers. But you have this document, it it just is the kind of final version. Once we cleaned up any questions or or any duplications in the data. And this is what our enrollment is looking like for this fall.
Okay. Other questions about that?
I do.
Are we, are we talking about the remote system, Edgenuity?
I'm sorry, with the, the Edgenuity software, that's the software that we're using in the fully remote program for K through five. And I just wanted to be sure that if anybody saw information coming out from DESI, that that has reached its capacity. That we have been part of the districts that were able to access that.
Superintendent, have you looked into the reviews? Because what I've been seeing is that it has extremely low ratings. And it's one article said it was ranked 394th. It has one out of five star ratings. Have, are you com, are you comfortable with the state system?
We have looked into that, Peter. The state has vetted this program at a, at a high level. And we are, we are now engaging with our staff to start training in the near future. So at this point, yes, we are comfortable.
Can I make a request, Mary Beth? This is in a doc. And so it was impossible for me and and because it wasn't one. One. Cell per number, it was impossible to port it over to a spreadsheet where you could total things up. So can you either put totals or put this into a spreadsheet for us?
I'm sure, be happy to do that.
Anna, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. Some of it's just related to some data sort of irregularities. And I don't know that we have an answer, but it's striking to me a couple of places where numbers really pop as being unusual. And I'm wondering if we have any reason to understand why that is. For example, I mean, some of, like, the one that really jumps out is grade seven has, you know, almost like rough back in that, like, 7% of our students are saying they're going to homeschool entirely. 20% are at the full remote and then 107. So that 10% of homeschool gives me a little bit of pause. Like, I'm just wondering, superintendent, for any of the places where there's a high irregularity, have we probed any of those parents to say what's going on? Because that, the numbers, that number jumps out as really high in a way that's very different from everything else around it. And then similarly, if you can go down to the high school numbers as well, unless I'm completely unable to do Yahtzee math. If I'm reading that correctly, that says that we only have 12 total, total high school students who are opting for full remote across all four grades. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yes.
Okay, that's, you know, again, it's sort of surprising, but informative. So I guess the irregularities are striking to me in terms of how we use that. And then the other thing, which I just want to sort of run it, run it through the truth factor. I've heard rumors that a lot of parents have been saying hybrid because they're hedging. And so I want to, and I'm sure you've heard that, too, that people said, yeah, we're going to go hybrid because they have an expectation it's all going to fall apart. And then they're going to get their in district remote anyway. So I just want to throw that out there as a potential sort of like. I like data, we all know this, but when you know that you have reports of parents doing that, it makes me sort of wonder how real some of these numbers are, if they've actually set hybrid. What they're really hedging for is full district remote. So I don't know how we probe that or how we get to the bottom of that. I also don't know how we stop parents from doing that because, again, the data is only as good as the question you ask and the person responding. So I just wanted to throw that out there is I've heard it from at least a dozen different people, there's probably more who said hybrid, but they really are not intending to want the hybrid, they're hedging. I just want to know if you've heard that and if you have a thought or response to that.
Yeah, at this point, we have asked people to make a selection and we are honoring that. I know a number of families have reached out to principals to talk through their options and have gotten additional information. But at this point, you know, I think that these numbers are fairly accurate. I can't speak to if there's a handful of folks that are choosing to do that. That's not something that we would have information about. So right now, we're really focused on trying to get those cohort groups out to families. We know that's critically important information in terms of people making their plans. And we are trying to be as responsive as possible to requests that people have made. We will not be able to honor all of them. But we did take into consideration the different requests that that people have made. And we are working to get this data out to people. And that is a key priority for us right now. As, as I'm sure you know, there is a tremendous amount of demands on our principals right now. And so that is the focus.
And then I think the only other thing I wanted to throw out is we're doing the sort of cohorts and planning and the shifting to try to give parents as much leave time. I just know a lot of the families I know that are going hybrid, there's so much unrest about what are the kids really going to be doing? It's making it difficult for them to plan what's happening on those three days. You know, how involved do they really need to be? Do they need to hire a babysitter? Do they need to not work? Do they need to hire a private pod teacher? So I do think that ambiguity around what the kids are doing is driving a lot of parent unrest about how to, how to staff their lives and in some cases, how to structure their house, like, how much room do they need? What are they going to be doing? So if I could just put an additional plug, that the sooner we can give people some clarity, I think community unrest will go down. And I think the drama will go down with more information.
Yeah, and that definitely is a place where answers will evolve now that our teaching staff is back. We certainly do not want to be putting schedules out with, without consulting our teachers. So that is something that, again, is part of the plan to move to in the near future.
Great, thank you.
I would just like to appeal to people that if they're putting in information, like, we spent the whole spring asking the community to support our schools. And you came out in droves to support our schools through our funding so that we could open our schools. The thing you can do now to support the schools is to give us accurate information for planning. So if you're hedging your bet, you're not helping the district to plan and could be causing us harm. So please don't do that, is what I'm going to ask. Peter.
I just want to circle back to where it says the state learning management system is full. Are all the families in Hamilton Wyndham going to be accepted into this, into the out system or?
Yeah. Superintendent said that we were accepted, so we, it's like we got in before it got full.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
And we have 250 licenses, so unless 250 elementary families were to choose all of a sudden to flip over, we have plenty of space, so.
Great. Sorry, I missed that.
Easy to do. All right, next. You have anything else, Mary Beth, to report tonight or this evening? Okay, so. So I'm going to ask if at our next meeting, we can have a little bit of an update on the high school full remote plan because I think these numbers do not reflect what we had anticipated. And I just want to be sure that our plan is still accurate. And then, you didn't mention, is this money? Is that a new thing? I read where that we got like $43,000 in the technology grant from the state.
That was monies that were available. We, we wrote the grant for that and we received 43,000.
Okay, and. Okay, my, my only other thing is I suspect September 2nd is going to be a long meeting, so people should plan ahead. Our standard has been to start at 7:00. So I'm going to be sending around a request to see if that's what you guys still want to do. Because it could go to 10, 10:30, 11:00. If we start then. Oh, that's all I have.
For the next meeting, can we get an update on if we've hired any more substitute custodians?
We'll have an entire staff update because by then people know.
I want to be, Michelle, I do feel like I need to say that we, this is a really busy time for our district, right? And what I was intending to offer in terms of a staffing update are where we are in terms of leave requests. Do we have any places where we think that we may have some challenges? And so what is the plan to address that? I will not be in a position to be able to give a full staffing update across the district.
Meaning like, what do you mean?
So thinking about, you know, what's happening in terms of, because if there were custodial leaves, if there were secretarial leaves, we can. These, but what I was indicating is that what I feel like I can legitimately commit to, to the committee in terms of knowing what bandwidth is right now, is to give an update in terms of staff that have requested leaves. How many of those have been granted? How, and if we see any places in which we think we are going to have a staffing issue? And if so, what is our plan to be able to address it?
Yeah, so those things that affect the classroom delivery of instruction kind of things.
For the opening of school and I, you know, as I said earlier, people know that if they are running into staffing issues, they can come to me. And if I, you know, I sit down with them and we review the information and it looks like we are in need of additional staff, then I am going to come to you and let you know that and ask for additional staff.
All right, so we're on the committee reports. Capital Finance Planning Subcommittee, have you met? Probably not. Yeah. Only thing, if you haven't already, if you are a liaison to ThinkCom or the Board of Selectmen, if you could just make sure they have our year-end closing slides. I've attended two selectmen's meetings trying to give that information to them and community comments have not been allowed. So I'm just going to send them an email. Policy, we've got your report because we did your thing. Stacy, do you have something to say?
Sorry, Michelle, I just not thinking because the last year I sent it to both BOS and ThinkCom at the same time with. What?
You already sent it to both?
Yep.
Oh, fantastic.
Sorry, Michelle, I was like, oh, yeah, I'm only doing ThinkCom, sorry.
Negotiations, you had our update in the executive session, that's all we've done. And so now we are on to the consent agenda, which includes a bunch of bills that Anna has paid or approved to be paid, final approval, and a bunch of minutes. So is there any of these that anyone would like to hold out so that we could discuss them?
I would, well, again, I'm not going to vote on things I wasn't present for, so I don't know if you have to hold them. But that will mean I abstained from the consent agenda if they're included.
That's you.
Well, just for good of order, then I'd like to hold June 3rd, June 10th, and June 17th.
All right. Dana, can you make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus those things?
Sure. I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee approves the consent agenda with the exception of, or withholding the June 3rd, June 10th, and June 17th minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second by Stacy.
Super, because it can be no discussion because it's consent agenda, we'll move straight to a vote. Anna?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Joe Bailey, yes, that passes unanimously. Now we will move to the approval of the minutes that were held.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee approve the minutes from June 3rd, June 10th, and June 17th, all in 2020.
Second by Stacy.
Stacy. Anybody want to discuss this?
I don't have access to some of the minutes. It says I need permission. So.
Be because you're signed into two Google accounts simultaneously?
Nope.
The other thing that can happen sometimes is that if you're not using your Hamilton Wyndham email and you try to sign into a personal email, it will send that signal.
Nope, this is my district iPad and I only do district business.
I had the same initial problem, too, but Mahala gave me permission for what it's worth. So I'm just corroborating, Peter might be having a real problem.
I'm wondering, because I should be on the, I'm wondering if the public can get in, can click on them.
Right, so that's a good question.
So I am going to.
So, yep, same for me on my iPad, so let's hold those. We'll vote on, so, Oregon, can you please keep track of that? Okay, hold on to those. Okay. So a topic for a future meeting is going to be a review of our plan.
How about the metrics?
And the metrics. And then if you have something you want added, you should let me know by a week in advance, so that'd be like tomorrow. So you can just send me an email and we'll see if it's something we can fit in because I know it's, I know that one's going to be long.
And are we, do we even update on, obviously, the HVAC update, right? That's going to be a weekly, a regular thing.
Or you can just go and watch it, too, but yeah.
Yeah, but I think it's the community and staff should.
We're not going to spend an hour on it.
No, no, just status update, I guess.
Anna?
Oh, for the, the agenda item about revisiting the plan, I just wanted to make clear that the policy issues for the pandemic that we just approved makes explicit that in collaboration with the superintendent, and you can make modifications to the reopening plan. So I don't want to be accused of being out of order when we get to that because that is part of our policy. Like, it's literally part of the document, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
And our plan as the metrics stay change will require us to change. The word pivot apparently is annoying to people, so we're going to use the word change from one.
But I just want to make a point, I think we can actually, if we want, we could change the structure of the plan itself.
Perfect.
Okay.
So on, so there's one item we did not have time to discuss in executive session. Tom, we need to go back to executive session. Can you reopen that link?
If not that one, I will make sure, I'm going to, I'll email it out right now.
Can I actually make a suggestion I think might be helpful is the original link that you had for executive session. If I can now close this meeting, I can open that one. So that, that email that you got for your original executive session link, what I would suggest is that you use that. And then I would suggest, I, I think we should be okay for Tom not to be there. I know Tom has been in since 6 o'clock this morning.
November is fine. Okay, so let me, let's do that. We'll use the original one that we couldn't use, which was our technical difficulty. Because I'm going to move that we adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of conducting strategy. Conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with the collective bargaining unit, the Hamilton Wyndham Education Association. Second by Dana. Roll call. Anna, oh, sorry.
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Did I say Stacy already?
You did.
Michelle, that's unanimous. Okay, so let's use that link. This should hopefully not take more than 10 minutes. Sorry about that.
All right, I'm going to close this one up.
Thank you for the 114 people watching tonight. I know they're always interested in knowing how many people are watching. So we will see you next week.